Welcome to the March 19th, 2024 City Council Budget Work Session. I'd now like to turn it over to City Manager Benda to walk us through the Agenda Overview.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of City Council. Today is the first day of spring, doesn't feel like that outside, but we're nice and toasty in here. Before you today, the Agenda, we have our Water Resources folks here. If you recall, in my proposed budget, I proposed rate increases for each of the different water funds, and today's our opportunity to explain what those increases are and why. And Tim had a family emergency, can't be with us, and you can see it's only taken half a nation and a group of, you know, quite a few. So Greg will lead us through that presentation and introduce all the different engineers that we have with us. The second bit of this afternoon is going to take up some CIP follow-up. We sent out on March 15th some answers to some questions that were proposed at last work session about capital improvement projects. Then I thought it might be helpful, between having proposed and current day, had the opportunity to get out and engage the public at a couple of different meetings. One at Diamond Hill, another at Golf Park, and then most recently this Friday with the city employees, both in council chambers and streaming. And so there's some questions that were proposed there, and just want to make sure that you guys are, I've seen many of you at the Budget and Brews, but I want to make sure that you kind of understand what the public is asking. And then also, kind of give you an update. Remember, we had the Bracketology or Bracket Challenge about proposed investments in different areas of the city, and so Greg will take up with that. And so, Mayor, with that, turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, we'll go over to our first item on the work session Agenda items, the Water, Sewer, Stormwater Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Overview and Rate Recommendations, Mr. Greg Patrick.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. If, I must apologize upfront, didn't plan on running through this presentation, so if we're not quite as polished as usual, do forgive us. We'll call this Greg and the Experts today. We've got our Water Resources staff here supporting us. At the table, we have Deputy Director Greg Poff, and then in the first chair, in the chairs in the first row back here, we have our Engineering Manager, Scott Parkins, our Financial Manager, John Rosser, and our new Public Relations Specialist, Jason Snyder, who put the slides together. Many of you may recognize Jason from his work on the Richland Hills Civic League and as an advocate for Richland Hills, but we're happy to have him on the team now. So with that said, we'll jump right into the presentation. Bottom line upfront, we are recommending a rate increase across all three funds, water, sewer, and stormwater. The sewer fund increase is mandated based on a consent order that we are under, so we have very little control over the amount of that increase. The water and stormwater rate increases are as a result of just increasing costs and the requirement that we keep our infrastructure in good shape. What you'll see up there is our average residential bill would be slated to increase by $3.22 per month, or just shy of $40 a year. That water increase being the largest, and the stormwater increase being the smallest at .45 per month. This is, of course, based on a very complicated calculation that we do when we measure water usage, which is, we use a 100 cubic feet of water, and it's based on the average residence use of 4.95 100 cubic feet of water. Of course, Council will recall that in this budget, Council, we are continuing Council's reduction of or elimination of the motor vehicle license fee for fiscal year 2025 and the refuse collection fee for 2025, which all told is, will save our residents more than $150 per year. So that savings does offset the increase in the proposed rates. We'll give you some more information on each one of these as we go forward. First, how do we compare? I think this is important. What you'll see here is, we've gone through, there is a rate study that is done across the state, and we have gone through and compared our rates to rates across Virginia, and we've put some neighboring localities in there. On average, our water and sewer fees are less than the Virginia average, and significantly less than a lot of our neighboring cities and counties. There's some good information for reference there as well. If we look at our stormwater fee, our stormwater fee is proposed to go to $4.93. That is still shy of the Virginia average or median fee of $6, so we're still well under the average in the state there. Best practices for setting rates and our goals, we want to be fair and equitable. We want, more than anything, the rates to reflect the true cost of the service. These are enterprises, so the revenue that we bring in should cover the expenses, but no more than that, plus what it takes to maintain Council's financial policies. And then, of course, we want our residents to have control over their bills to the extent that they have control over their utilization. I think one thing you'll see later in the presentation is, there are a lot of localities who have high fixed fees associated with their water or sewer rates. We do not. We have a very small fixed fee, which means our residents have significantly more control over their bills than many of our neighboring localities and localities across the state. Our goals, of course, minimize rate increases to the extent possible, but we want to make sure that we are maintaining our infrastructure, we are providing safe, healthy, clean drinking water, we're requiring with, we're meeting all of our regulatory requirements, which really, really drive costs, and that we, of course, comply with the state's CSO consent order in our Water Resources recovery, in our sewer fund. So first, let's take a look at our Water Fund Budget Summary. You can see here, this is what-
Voice, is that something banging?
Oh.
I keep hearing something banging, or maybe it's somebody's foot tapping or something tables. Let's quit now. Was that, maybe that's what was-
It was, yes.
Good, thank you.
All right.
You got Greg and the experts, no sense pounding the drums.
Yeah, there we go.
Maybe it was the tables hitting.
All right, so, yeah, it's not a very good band name, I must say. Our Water Fund Budget Summary, as you can see, estimated revenue in fiscal year 24 is current budget, 17 million this year, up to 18.8 million, and you'll see the breakdown of where those costs lie. Salaries and benefits, these are related to the salary increase that we have in the budget, a chemist position associated with lead and copper rule provisions, and of course, debt service and supplies. It's those debt service costs that truly drive the replacement of our infrastructure, which is so important going forward, and again, we'll have more detail there shortly. Our capital budget summary here, you can see new projects that we've added to the CIP in fiscal year 2025. If there's any questions about specific projects, I think the experts have that well covered. Just a little background on our water infrastructure. We have 455 miles of water lines that will get you from here to New York. So roads will get you a little past Chicago in the city, water lines will get you to New York, yes. Right now, we have 95 miles of water lines that are in need of replacement, so that's somewhere around, close to a fifth. Over the next 25 years, we'll have another 30 miles that will, 30 miles plus that will reach 100 years of age, and then from 2050 to 2060, we'll have another 53 miles of water lines that reach that benchmark. So you can see, we have, as quickly as we can replace water lines, we have others that are reaching their end of life. Again, a closer look at our aging infrastructure, and there's a number of reasons that lines need to be replaced. We have cast iron pipes, 76 miles will need to be replaced by 2050. Cast iron pipes are susceptible to corrosion and breaks, can impact water quality, and it's one of the things that we're actually looking at, looking for in our lead, can't think of the right word, but our inventory of lead lines, is cast iron lines in the water delivery system. We have undersized lines, about 18 miles, that are in need of replacement, and then in the late 70s, we began using asbestos cement pipes, which are an inferior material, and we've got about 33 miles that are going to require replacement shortly and special handling when we go through the replacement. So as we, when we discuss the budget in some of your one-on-ones, we talked about, there would be scenarios for the Water Fund, and we've broken down four scenarios here. We are recommending option number three. Options one and two will actually see us falling behind where we are right now in our overall state of good repair. Option one basically means we will not increase capital spending at all, and will kind of fall to a 270-year replacement cycle. Option two would adjust our capital spending just for inflation. That would keep us at about a 200-year replacement cycle. Option three, which is what we're recommending, would see about four and a half miles of pipes replaced each year, and 13 miles of backlog replaced by 2050. It would get us to a 100-year replacement cycle by 2070. So we're not getting where we need to be, but we get there as quickly as we'd like, which is by 2050, but we are putting ourselves on pace to get to 100-year replacement cycle. And then, of course, option number four gets us to where our Water Master Plan recommends, which is that we get to 100-year replacement cycle by 2050, and then you can see the relative rates that would be required to get to each of these options. So again, what does option three get us? It gets a replacement of our most necessary pipes, those farthest past their expected life. What it doesn't get us, it gets us a sustainable path forward. Again, we get to 100-year replacement cycle, but we do it by 2070 and not 2050, as our master plan would recommend. Next slide. What does options one and two get us? Again, falling behind, right? So options one and two would see us put on a path for our infrastructure overall to get worse, year over year. And then, next slide, an option number four obviously sees us keeping pace with our Water Master Plan. Our Sewer Fund Budget, and again, in our Sewer Fund, we have the consent order, and that fee is really set by a financial algorithm that we'll go over in an upcoming slide, but you can see the breakdown of the increases here. Again, it's the debt service that really helps us keep pace with our infrastructure needs. Next slide. Our major projects in the capital budget, you can see $96 million for our Blackwater CSO 52 Tunnel. This is the biggest capital project that the city has ever undertaken. It is out-for bid right now. We did just get some good news from, I think it was DEQ, that the timeline that we had originally laid out may have a little bit more flexibility than we were thinking, which we are hopeful will allow some of the contractors that are looking at bidding on this project to have a little bit more comfort that they can get the work done in time to meet the project goals in the RFP. And then, of course, you can see the Richland Hills Sewer Extension Project in there as well, and our engineers can help answer any questions about specific projects there. Next slide. Again, our sewer fee is based on a consent order that that bill must equal or exceed 1.25% of the median household income. You can see that this year, based on our calculations, it will lead to a 20-cent increase in the rate. Keep in mind that median household income calculation accounts for the $7.69 monthly service fee, which means if we were to remove that fee, we would have to increase the utilization fee to make up for it. And we will be, at $8.30, we'll be in compliance with that math, that algorithm for fiscal year 2025. Our Stormwater Budget, fiscal year 2024 budget of 4.1 million, 2025 at 4.5 million. It's really the increase in debt service and our leaf collection and engineering fees that we pay to public works that are driving the cost increase here. We have no employees in our stormwater fund, or very, very few employees in our stormwater fund, but it's really the debt service cost and the infrastructure replacement which are driving the increases there. Next slide. Our largest capital projects, new projects in the budget in fiscal year 2025, you'll see on there, we've highlighted the College Park Improvements Project at $2 million. We've had a lot of conversations around this project. We have, in the General Fund, additional funding for, when Water Resources or Stormwater completes the infrastructure here to come in and put park amenities in. Just wanted to make Council aware, this is a pretty big project for stormwater, and to understand the impact of the project from a financial standpoint, if we were to, most importantly, if we choose to move forward with this project, the debt service really doesn't come due until future years, so we would be, in essence, committing ourselves to at least a 15-cent increase to the stormwater fund in a future year for this project. And it would also mean, if we didn't move forward with it this year, that proposed fee of $4.93 could be reduced to $4.86. If we didn't do this project for, if Council chose not to do this project, we would also have to have a conversation around what we would do with the funding in the General Fund that we have set aside to put the park amenities in this project once the infrastructure was done. But because it's such a large project, wanted to draw your attention to it. Next slide. Stormwater infrastructure, it's, we are having a number of issues across the city. You see a number of stormwater infrastructure collapses there, and this is happening more and more across the city. Next slide, Matt. One of the interesting things, when we think about the stormwater fee and why these fee increases become necessary, is we didn't start issuing debt for stormwater until 2012-ish. So what that means, none of the debt that we have issued is less than 20-year debt, which means we have no debt rolling off the stormwater fund until the early 2030s. So any new capital project that we do that's funded by debt only adds to that debt service burden. We don't have anything on the backend that's rolling off. In the General Fund, and Donna's talked about Heritage High School, the pig and the snake, right? When that rolls off, we'll get some relief, but there's nothing like that in the stormwater fund. So because it's newish, because none of that debt service is rolling off, those costs keep increasing year over year, debt service costs do. Next slide. So again, what does the service charge cover? So I know there's been a number of questions in, about the service charge and how it would, whether or not we could remove it from the bill. The answer is, yes, we could remove it from the bill, but that service charge is just a fixed, the fixed portion of the water and sewer bill. And without the service charge, in order for us to meet our infrastructure requirements, in order for us to meet the consent order, we would need to just increase the variable portions of those fees to the numbers that you see here. So if it's the, if it's the fixed fee portion of the service charge that we don't like, there is a way to convert it to all variable cost, but what we can't do, without taking a hit to our ability to maintain our infrastructure, and on the sewer side, without violating the CSO consent order, is eliminate the fixed fee, but not increase the variable fee. Next slide. What you'll see on this next slide is, if you compare our fixed fee in sewer and water to some of our neighbors, it's very, very low. And what this means is, it gives our residents more ability to have some control over their water and storm, and sewer fees, because they can control the amount of water that they use. Bedford County, Town of Bedford, you see that, there's a fixed fee of $54, so it's significantly more, which means before you use a drop of water, those residents are paying, their bills are that much before we even say go. Next slide, Matt. So in summary, we're recommending increases in all three funds. Despite the increases, our residents are still paying less across the board than other Virginia localities, and we do have a lot of infrastructure needs over the next 25 years, 25 to 50 years, especially in our stormwater, in our water funds, and these rate increases will set us on a good path to get there. That's it.
Thank you very much for your excellent presentation. Questions or comments from Council? Cosmo Hugasan?
Maybe we start going backwards, so that the fixed service charge, so obviously, as you mentioned, the, you can dissect it between fixed and variable. Now, are there real fixed costs? There are some real fixed costs associated with the fixed charge, like the meter reading and that kind of stuff? Is that-
Utility billing.
Huh?
Utility billing.
So you're billing regardless of them using any water? Enterprise fund is based on usage, so there are, I mean, that was an arbitrary number, I think, that was originally pulled in there at one time. Is it based on any cost accounting of what the fixed costs would be?
Yeah, we look at the indirect cost every year, but it does pay for the utility billing staff, plus the cost for billing the bills and receiving the funds. We've got a post office box where the payments come to, so there are set expenditures that are related to that fee. I know for a number of years, a lot of years, it was $3.69, and it really wasn't, yeah, it wasn't really covering the true cost, because the meter readers, the meter replacements are part of that. Yeah, there's a list of things that are-
A list of things that are fixed costs that would get close to that 7.69 or not?
Well, you also have to take consideration, you know, the building, the houses, the meter readers, their vehicles, just the electricity in the building, you know, all that feeds into the cost to provide the service of water and then to collect those fees.
Don, you have to help my audience, the finance person here, I think.
Oh, yeah, John can help too.
Not necessarily looking at the cost of providing it, you're just looking at, as Greg mentioned, if you're going to make it more equitable, if it's, if there's a dollar that is the fixed cost and somebody doesn't use any service, they're going to get billed the dollar. If somebody uses a lot, their variable costs would go through the roof because they used a lot more, so you'd still get recompense based on the cost of the service, but is that fixed cost of the bill really 7.69?
It depends on how you define the fixed cost, right? In my mind, fixed cost has to include our debt service, right? And because those are commitments we've made to borrowers, that fee comes nowhere close to covering those fixed costs. Plus, when you add in all the items that Donna's mentioned.
But as opposed to, I mean, so, I'm asking, is it, is the 7.69 at least fair for somebody who doesn't use any service, or very little service?
Gotcha.
Obviously, there's going to be a fixed portion, even somebody who doesn't use any service, because you still got somebody that has to go by their house and read the meter that there was zero HCF that month. You go by next month, zero HCF. Is that, what, maybe that, you can-
Anyway, as Donna mentioned, the 3.69 that was put in place years and years ago, I mean, probably over 15 years ago, that number changed at that fee, but the actual cost of billing and meter reading is over $7.
So it is equitable, fairly equitable to 7.69?
Further, yes, well, and-
I know it was an arbitrary number. I think the 3.69 originally was based on something, because that's when the stormwater came, but then we lowered something, they said, oh, we'll just add this, and so it kind of was arbitrary to get to the 7.69.
Well, what we did years ago, it had been 3.69 for a very long time, and I guess roughly seven, eight years ago, we added $2 to the 3.69 to help stabilize revenue a little bit, because at the time, it was being recognized that water-saving devices were being installed, like toilets and dishwashers and things that don't use water. So that helped us stabilize revenue, and then the following year, we added another $2. So that totaled 3.69 plus $2 plus $2 is now 7.69.
So it was a way of stabilizing revenue as opposed to being equitable difference between a fixed and a variable cost?
But it does about cover the cost now.
Yes, yeah, if you just won't look at it differently, that's covering meter reading and the collections. Now, you mentioned, you know, being a financial man yourself, like, what is fixed cost and what is variable cost? The cost of producing water is roughly 8%, and the rest of it is fixed. So, you know, I had a conversation with a gentleman years ago, and he was from a nursing home, and looking for a project for his friends at the nursing home, and his situation was, he wanted to help his friends and the community to save water. As our situation here at Lynchburg, we want to sell water as much as we can, because 8% is actually a variable cost, and 92% is actually fixed. So the more water we sell, the cheaper we can make it for the citizens of Lynchburg.
So then, that would already then, that we'd need a high service charge and low variable cost for the actual use of the, which we kind of did a while ago, I think Gaynell finally said that with regarding the trash tags, said the cost wasn't in the variable cost of picking up trash, the cost was in somebody driving down the road, whether you have trash or not. So should this then be going the opposite? I mean, should it have a, more of a fixed cost and not fluctuate so much based on usage?
No, it depends on-
I mean, if you're saying that 8%, 8% is variable, well, that means if somebody doesn't use water or not, then they got the same bill.
That's correct. It depends on the viewpoint of the citizen, it depends on the viewpoint of Council.
Because an enterprise fund is supposed to be based on the utilization.
Correct.
And I think the point was, the $7.69 basically covers the meter readers and utility billing, so that's the piece within the bill. Because I know the cost of meter reading has gone up, because we had to replace, yeah, we had to replace the meters, and then now, I think there may be less people cost and more meter cost based on radio read and those type of things, so.
So with that, based on that discussion, I think it's something that you kind of, I mean, it can't be just an arbitrary number. I think it's been somewhat arbitrary, once it moved, you know, as a revenue source as opposed to kind of looking at what is the fixed cost, since, you know, Greg brought that up.
I'd like to make one more comment on-
John, really quick, can you please help to the mic? Thank you.
Talk to Mike? Mike is not here.
Years ago, we talked about, you know, the monthly service charge, and, you know, we were, actually intent was increasing it, you know, to two more dollars, so it'd be 7.69, then it'll be 9.69. Anyway-
Oh, mine's not there either, oh.
Anyway, the reason we stopped at 7.69, that it was thought that, you know, maybe the Council needs to be more sensitive to those who are low-income. And so, you know, if you have a low-income person and they live by themselves, you know, that fixed charge becomes more weighted.
And so, again, it's, if it's a fixed charge, it should be a fixed charge. I mean, you're arguing that it, so I think that's something you should kind of, not necessarily today, but to wrestle with. The rate increase for water, so I know it's looking like a small dollar number, but that's a 12.3% increase. I mean, that's a humongous increase, the one that is required per the consent order is sewer, and that's only less than 2.5%.
I think if anything, it speaks to the relative infrastructure needs within the Water Fund going forward. The one thing that, and I don't want to speak out of turn here, but, so, engineers, jump in if I've got something wrong here, but the one thing that the consent order has allowed us to do is keep up with the costs that we needed to maintain the-
us to do is keep up with the costs that we needed to maintain the sewer infrastructure and make sure that we're keeping up with all of our CSO projects. Where we haven't had those consistent rate increases with water, I think we found that we're probably a little bit further behind there on our water distribution lines. So is that...
You know, one that's, you talked about the cast iron lines, I think you had, let's see that. So did the cast iron lines, did those replace, what did they replace? Everything replaced something? What lines did the cast iron replace? Did they replace some of the wood lines?
So back in the early...
Closest you can to the microphone.
So, yeah, wood lines were the original pipe construction in the city. The cast iron actually started being used in the mid-1800s. I think the oldest line that we found was around 1830 sometime in that timeframe. So, but cast iron was the primary waterline construction from when we started using iron water lines in the 1840s, 1850s, all the way up through 1964, I believe is when we transitioned into ductile iron, which is just the more modern version. And so the cast iron, if you go back and look at the research institution, which is called DIPRA, Ductile Iron Research Pipe Association, their recommendation is that cast iron has a typical lifespan of 100 years. And that was our target goal when we started the master plan was how do we catch up with all of this pipe that was put in in the 1800s and get it up to 100-year-old so that we're replacing 1% per year going onward?
Yeah. So some of those that are, you know, like, I think like the wood lines that a lot of times would use in those numbers, that some of the wood is, you know, it's petrified and it's not going anywhere. And there's no, I don't think you get lead or anything in there, do you?
No.
No. I mean, they're, and so if we replace some of those really old wood lines to replace them with cast iron, to replace them with the new thing, is there a way that we have some of these old cast iron pipes, the 76 miles that it says here, that are still in great shape? Are good enough shape to not have to worry about the, just a mathematical replacement?
Well, yeah, we could certainly look at the break histories on these lines and try to evaluate which lines need to be replaced. There are concerns, there's other eras of production. For example, World War II era where the iron production was of lesser quality. So historically, across the country, you see breaks in pipes that were installed in the 1940s breaking more than what was put in in 1910, for example.
Yeah, yeah. And we have those mapped, so where you could, you're doing that to kind of, are able to go back in the archives and say what was done at what times?
We're trying to, yeah. We're making efforts to try to catalog our break histories through our Lucity work management system.
Which would be good because it's, you know, replacing one just because they're old, you know, we replaced, and Greg members this, they replaced the line in front of my house and with the old pipe, and then eight years later, it broke. You know, it was like, it was the new stuff that's supposed to last forever. I also had a little sewer issue that I didn't get hooked up to the sewer somehow.
One thing I do want to just make a point also, and Greg had mentioned it, was about the lead service line stuff. And that was, you were talking, you mentioned it, but being in the main distribution pipes, it's really in the service lines coming off of, off of the, so the lead service lines transitioned into what we called galvanized service lines on the private side, and that's where we're targeting for needing replacement, not the distribution lines due to lead. So I just want to clarify that.
So with the water and having a 12, you know, 12.3% increase in the cost of the, you know, the HCF, and we can, I think we can kind of recognize that the difference between the capital costs versus the operating costs. And some of those operating costs, it looks like, I thought that was part of the grant, some of that, you know, the lead and copper rules, or the lead rules at least. I thought we had a grant recently that covered that. It looks like it's now...
We do, I don't think it covers the ongoing operations, it's one-time money, obviously. We're going to have testing requirements going forward with this program when we get into implementation. We don't have any, we have money to cover the survey essentially, but not the implementation. And there's going to be a ton of testing related to that program as well. So it's, we're just entering the beginning of the lead service line.
Odyssey?
Saga.
Yeah, that'll be a whole different meeting.
Yes. Is there, you know, because I can understand some of the capital, but the operating budget's going up a very large portion in this fund. So the slide that I'm looking at going from 17 to 18 and a half million or 18.8 million...
Probably slide four or five, Bench.
Just in the operating. And so the issue, it sounds like to me, it's always been more the cost involved with a lot of the capital that hasn't been fixed, but we're increasing the largest percentage of the increases going towards operating. Is there a way we can streamline the operating and focus more of that on capital?
So you've got, your debt service cost, your supplies, materials, utilities, contractual services, these are, these are, these are cost increases related to inflation, right? So for us to be able to, you know, buy the things we need, pay the electric bill primarily, pay for our contractual services, those costs have just gone up unless we do less. So that really leaves us with the salaries and benefits. Where you are there is a big, the biggest chunk of that is the 3% salary increase. There is the cost for the chemist, which is about 70 grand. You know, are we going to violate any lead service requirements in fiscal year 2025 if we don't have a chemist? No. Are we going to need to have a chemist sooner rather than later to make sure that we're keeping up with all of our regulatory requirements and additional chemists? Absolutely, right? So it's, it's sort of pay me now, pay me later there.
But that's something that we'd obviously not do until we're actually looking at the lead.
Right, well...
So that would be this year?
We are right now, yes. I mean, part of the sampling that we're doing and the testing that we're doing related to the inventory, if I'm, is going to require testing, water testing.
So I mean, that's all, I mean, then you have to set up a lab and you got to...
We have a lab already. We just, but we need the additional capacity because the chemists that are doing testing now have all the work they can manage, basically. If we bring on a new program...
There's one chemist.
There's one chemist. So if we bring on a new program, like the lead service, the lead and copper rule revisions, that chemist that we have isn't going to be able to keep up with all the additional work related to that program. That being said, is it, could you get by another year? Maybe. Could you get by much more than that with everything? Probably, probably not. And you're talking, what, less than a penny on the rate? And then beyond that, it's making sure that some of our water operators have a progression plan to follow so that we're able to make, that we're able to keep them. Right now, we are having trouble getting class, class one operators in the door and then getting them to progress through all the way to class four.
Class one's the...
Yes, class one.
Class four's the trainee.
So it looks like this increase, 12.29% increase in the rate, that most of it's going to operating and less of it's going to capital.
I think if you total it, Doug...
10 and a half percent looks like it's going to operating.
What's that number? So it looks like it's still, if you're doing debt service, supplies, utilities, what have you?
I think you're kind of within the same, same range, maybe a little bit higher than 650.
Yeah.
That's almost 700,000.
Those other reliable items are not shown, they don't make up that difference. Did you want to talk about that, John, or?
No, we don't need to do that necessarily, but I'm just saying that the largest increase, so you know, the, so the increase in the rate to our customers would go up 12.3%. 10 and a half percent of that rate, or 10 and a half percent is going to operating. And lots of the argument has been, well, we need to replace the capital and those capital lines. So to me, it seems like a lot less of it is going to the capital as opposed to the operating with this rate increase.
What we see here is in the operating, there's costs that we need to just maintain what we're doing right now, right? So yes, are we, is supplies, materials, utilities, contractual services, are those operating expenses? Absolutely. If we, however...
So to me, that would be, mean somewhere in easy neighborhood of 3% to 4%. This operating is going up 10 and a half percent.
Okay.
So that's what I'm wondering, if there's an ability to say, hey, less of this, if we're having an increase and it needs to go for the water lines to replace the numbers that you stated, that means more needs to go to capital, which you can augment that by less going to the increase in the operating.
You could, and remember, kind of married with that is, again, want to make sure the workforce, right? From the standpoint, if I'm proposing a 3% cost of living for all across, you know, non-sworn, right? So doing for one and not for another, right? So that's, that's how we kind of measure the two. And so I think that's what's reflected there is that cost of living. So to answer your question, you certainly could.
To me, that would be the three, some percent.
And I think that's why, can you put to the different options? There are three proposals here. So if this is, and I know that you're just focused on the water and the increase that's proposed, they're not necessarily the other ones.
But the comparison's on the water, I think.
Right. And so if, again, the clicker seems to be busted or...
Sorry.
There we go. So there are the three options. And I think in form there is kind of Tim and his team kind of making sure that you and your peers kind of understand what the increases look like. And but if you want us to break it down even more into the different water funds, we certainly can.
So I'm just, so the option one, so if we look at this, what you have up there in option one, that means an 8% increase in the rates. And without doing anything extra on capital. And you just discussed the 3% cost of living. So there's, there's, now we're 5% increase in the rates.
But the, the, the portion of the operating that is increasing the fastest, not the most, but the fastest, is the supplies, the, can we go back to that slide, Bench?
So lots of other things, okay.
Yeah.
Well...
Because the largest portion of the fund is going to pay for a personnel, right? So if that's, even though it's increasing the most, it's not increasing, increasing at the highest, the highest rate. And if we don't do some of those other operational expenses, then we end up pulling funds out of debt service, which means we go backwards in our capital investment as opposed to forwards because we can't, we can't give general employees a salary increase and not water resources.
I just, I just see this as a very large increase, you know, trying to, it's got to be either justified or broken down better. 12.29% increase in the water rates, to me, that's, that's big. One last thing on the stormwater. So you had mentioned about that new project, the 2 million. So that would be for College Park improvements, and that's the stormwater without any corresponding increase in debt, ability for debt service because nothing's rolling off.
Right.
And so the debt service on that, you had given a number. Thought I wrote it down, but maybe I didn't.
Previous slide, Bench, I think. There you go, 128.
So that would, to do that, it would add another five bucks on the stormwater bill?
So, no, 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 five. So if this is the FY '25 proposed operating cost increases, if we go to the next slide, you'll see that in the capital budget, we have a big $2 million project for College Park. Those debt service costs likely won't hit until after fiscal year 2025, which means if we take on a project like that, we could, you're committing yourself, we're committing ourselves essentially to a 15-cent rate increase in the future. Not doing that project at all in '25 would allow us to save about 7 cents on the rate, right? So from 493 to 486, because some of those costs are going to hit, are going to hit this year.
Okay.
But it is a project that's been planned for a long time, and it's one that's got, you know, corresponding amenities already funded in the...
So that's a new project.
It's been planned for a while?
I mean, it's been planned, but it's a new, new project. You know, one thing that I think is a little more, you know, I guess, when I look at the stormwater and I look at projects that have happened actually right on Oakley Avenue, some of you are here and remember that some of the pipes were improved to Oakley Avenue. The problem is the pipes, so the stormwater goes really fast because of bigger pipes, bigger capacity and faster velocity, going from where they're catching all the water to Oakley Avenue. Oakley Avenue, once it hits there, the pipes beyond are not increased. I don't know if you know the specifics or somebody knows exactly, but so those pipes, so you got a bigger pipes going into smaller pipes. Those smaller pipes pop off, and you've been there, you've seen it, right by the church. It pops off, the police come out, nobody can go down this road because it pops off, the stormwater pops off, the manhole covers.
The river, can't catch you around.
Yep. And so the problem is the stormwater, it's great getting there. The problem is it now collects and it now blocks the road, the manholes are off, people hit it because it's going through water, the manhole's gone, flat tires, because it can't continue to go. So I think for me, it'd be good to have, where we have stormwater management problems, not something necessarily new, but fixing and allowing where we know there are problems, and it's been problems for a long time. And it's problems that have been fixed upstream. This was, I remember talking about this with Kim Payne, and he said, oh, yeah, we got to do something about that, but the problem is it's a lot of money going past. Getting it to flow and not to have a choke point that's going to bust up, you know, going up into the road, I think is a better utilization.
Well, we're actually completing a study right now of that particular problem, and it's led to another problem in Ford Avenue.
Okay.
So that's to be decided in a couple of years, what we're going to have to do with it.
Yeah.
This is going to be lots of money, millions of dollars.
Yeah. So based on this and your question, I would rather us fix the things that we have current problems that we absolutely know than doing something new.
We can get additional information about the College Park project. I do know that, it says park, but it's not, it's not parking.
Totally.
Right? There are legitimate stormwater infrastructure issues there, and we, probably best thing to do at this point is just get a little information out.
Because you have it here, it's normally been in the college, the park, the park, just kind of the amenities of the park as opposed to the, this is kind of new seeing this infrastructure under the ground. So, thank you.
Okay, I know it's starting to speak, if I could speak to this point since it's on topic. Go ahead. I used to live literally like on Amelia Street, which is right on top of College Park. I can tell you, this is a problem. It is a log jam. When it rains heavy, looking from the Amelia Street side down onto College Park, the left-hand side where the basketball court is closer to the college or the university. When it rains hard, that whole area floods, clogs right up with all the debris that's been sitting in College Park, and then it does pour over to the street. So that very same issue that was articulated of some of the issues, it does happen here. It is a recurring problem, and that's coming from personal experience. So I just wanted to submit that as we are considering this. I'm not saying I disagree, but I am, I want it to be known, like, no, it really is a problem here.
Can you pull up that picture that you had a second ago? Just to ask, who's got the pictures? Like this picture that you had where the stormwater capital budget, College Park?
Yeah.
So is the water going in here? There. It's going in that little swale under there, right?
The back end, so the two basketball nets behind the basketball net?
Yep.
And I don't know what the engineering term would be, but it's in that corner.
So it's in that little...
Gully.
Swale or gully or whatever you want to call it?
Right here.
As opposed, yeah, yeah, that's what, yeah.
Farther back behind those trees.
As opposed to the road is, I think, is what I was referring to a little different.
The intersection.
Dr. Wilder?
Yes, thank you for the information, really appreciate it. You know what, so make sure I'm clear, the recommended increase is about $3.22 per month to taxpayers, to citizens. And if we go with option three, is that the same? Can you go back to that slide that shows the three options?
We're working it out. I love it. I mean, you guys, keep it up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. So with option three, at the bottom it says 3.29. What's the difference? So I can be clear.
So, yeah, this is, that would be the new rate per 100 cubic feet, which would amount to $1.78 per month for your average residential user.
Is factored into that 3.22?
It is. That's one of the three areas that's factored into that.
But basically, we're looking at about $3.22 increase per house, across all three funds. All together, yes. Now, I'm always, you know, even in my time on the school board, we always can look at options, and we look at whether we do it, pay it now or pay it later. And to me, we kind of push things off, you're going to be paid higher route later because you allow things to lapse, allow things to get more corroded, you know. One thing, I always think about Flint, Michigan, and that should be a national case of what needs to be done to make sure you have safe water. Now, I like having a safe water and clean water, and knowing that the pipes, if there's a hundred years old, there is a plan in place to replace them. My house is 150 years old, I got to replace stuff every month because of my house, but that's a whole nother subject. So we have water systems that's 150 years old, it's going to need some plus, 200 years, I guess, or so. You're going to have some replacements. So I appreciate that it's on a cycle. I appreciate the lower cycle, number, option number three, because it's got to do a little balance, where you're looking at certain things, replacing certain things, so you can maintain a safe quality. And I look at the expertise, I have to rely, I'm not a water expert, but I rely on the expertise of the committee and the recommendations of the staff members, where they recommend certain things, because we can do this, we can do that, this is what we're recommending, especially being an expert. I know we've been on City Council for a certain years, and 20 years, or whatever, and I've only been here for eight, but we still rely on expertise of our staff to give us that information about what needs to be replaced. I'm not going to go get in the manhole and see where they need to be replaced, or a manhole cover, or a sewer cover, or which pipe is lead, which pipe is wood. I just don't have time to do that, or the expertise to even analyze that. So I appreciate the staff doing that and having a system in place that we can recognize that. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate the recommendations. I want to have a, for me, as a personal citizen, as a taxpayer, I want to make sure I have confidence in my city staff, in my city team, that they're replacing what needs to be replaced, not wasting money, not wasting resources, but they're looking at what we can do at a reasonable cost to make sure this fund is self-sufficient, that we're covering the cost. Other thing, that looked, you mentioned inflation, everything has gone up, from gas to water to bread, to everything has gone up. So this is customarily natural, that again, because of utility costs and every other costs, and also we recommend a three percent for our staff members, as well as for the waterfront staff members, you can't, like you said, can't give one increase, but can't give the other increase. That just would not be fair, and that's a hard, from my understanding, it's hard to get certain persons in those certain areas, with especially the expertise that's needed. So we've got to maintain a three percent at least for that staff as well. I think that's the main points I wanted to bring out. Again, we're talking about pennies on the dollar, and we can try to save a few pennies and put stuff off, and put these off later on, and say, don't replace this for 100, but maybe next 200 years, we can replace something. I'd rather recommend go by the recommendation of the staff, and follow the recommendations, so I have a comfort level that we have a safe drinking water in our community. And I believe our citizens will appreciate that more. We can cost-cut things, and cut this out, and cut that out. Again, what do we do? We reduce the quality of our product, reduce the quality of our service, and you have, you will have all those, and you're going to have some breaks, and so one of the main breaks is that nature, it's just natural to happen. But you can reduce the expenses, and reduce that unexpected thing happening, where you make sure you're doing your best to make sure you have a quality product, and your product is being looked after by experts to say, we're doing this strategically to make sure we're replacing things that need to be replaced, and we have a plan in place to make sure we do that. I look at, let's go to the school system, we look at all those roof replacements. There is a cycle to replace all those roofs that need to be replaced. But when you get off that cycle because it's a bad budget year, you got the cycle, put this off, put that off, you end up compromising the quality of the product, and then you compromise it later, and they say, oh, now we got to do this thing quicker, because now the quality has been compromised, and now we don't have no longer confidence in this roof because we put it off so many years. So again, I appreciate the staff, I appreciate the recommendations, I appreciate your efforts in putting this together, and what we need to do for our citizens. Thank you.
Vice President for All.
I also have a couple thoughts on the College Park project, so if we can go back to that slide. In other words, by doing this strategy that you have proposed to us, it would require increasing rates down the line?
Yes.
Okay, so, I'm not opposed to that, if the rates would roll off when the project would be paid for. And is that possible? Because what I don't want to happen is, we've increased the rates, project is paid for, and now we're left with, hey, great, we're just going to hold on to it and do other things, which, there's a logic to that, however, I'm not sure I subscribe to it.
So the rate increase would cover the debt service on the capital investment, which wouldn't roll off for 20 or 30 years. So, I mean, eventually, yes, would we ever be able to point to when or how the rate increase rolled off? It would be difficult, it would be way down the line.
So is $2 million worth 20 to 30 years of debt service?
I mean, that's, any of these capital projects are that way. We're not funding any of those, those projects you see with operating.
No, I understand. I, that's what I'm wrestling with. I mean, this is Ward Four, right across the street from Ward Three. That's what I'm wrestling with, is, is $2 million worth, you know, my entire lifetime in debt service? And I'm not sure it is.
Hold on one second, please. Council missions?
I've got a couple of questions on this. The first one would be, propose to look at our description, I think it's slide number nine. Those, the pipes that are scheduled for replacement, is there a priority? Do we know, like the undersized pipes, is that a priority in replacement? Do we have an answer for that? How the prioritization is going with this?
Yeah, we are currently working with an engineering firm, WRA, to develop a master plan that is going to take us through various phases through the year 2050, and their highest priority projects, they have already slated, they've given me a list of them for essentially 2030. We're probably going to end up pushing it more like 2035 when it's all said and done. But yeah, the higher priority projects will be tried to be tackled first. And I think probably the most critical ones are probably the undersized ones where we have no fire flow service in certain areas. So trying to get those out of the system is one of, one of the big things we're trying to tackle initially.
Is there any crossover in that, where we have aging cast iron pipes that are undersized? Is that something?
Yes, the cast iron minimal size was four inch, which is considered undersized, so...
Yeah, that's way too small.
Yeah, so there, so we are trying to tackle, there are pipes that are cast iron and that are four inch, would qualify for both of them, but I eliminated the four inch and less pipes first, so those would be pulled out as a separate category from the rest of the cast iron listing.
Okay, thank you. And then, you know, kind of going back, you know, to the, we were having the discussion about, you know, fixed costs versus variable costs, right, earlier. Would you guys be able to provide for us before the public hearing, these pages of the budget, 218, 219, so forth, and actually highlight the portions of our expenditures that are variable versus fixed and so forth with the revenue sources, so that we could actually see, here's fixed revenue, here's variable revenue, here's fixed expenses, here's variable expenses. And I think that'll kind of help us understand where we are with that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and we can, we'll do that before the public hearings on the 16th. So we'll, we meet with schools next week, Tuesday, the 26th, and then we have another budget reconciliation on the 9th. So we can, we'll have it out probably in our memo as early as next week, or close there, too, and then we can talk about it on the 9th.
I just think it's going to be an easier way to consume the information.
Sure.
And then, the other thing that's kind of interesting to me is, we've been talking a lot about rates. We've been talking a lot about linear feet of pipes. But my question is, how many 100 cubic feet are we producing year after year? So how many 100 cubic feet did we produce five years ago? How many 100 cubic feet did we produce four years ago? I would like to see what that looks like, because I know we talked about, I think it was mentioned, the water-saving devices and things like that, that people are using these days. I'm very curious to see what, what's the nexus between how much are we producing, and how's the rate moving, right? Because if we're producing this as the rate's doing this, there's something we got to look at there.
Overall utilization.
Yep, overall utilization for the whole system.
Doesn't anyone want to speak that hasn't spoken, because it is 5 o'clock? I know we need to move on to the proposed budget reconciliation. Councilman Taylor, Councilman Dolan? Is there anything that you wanted to add, since somebody can move on?
So slide 10. So slide 10, it looks like there's like $12 million of new capital projects, all of which are downtown. So there's $12 million of new capital projects, and is that the driver for the new operating debt service? That would be about four percent, which would be the 484 debt service. So is most of the debt service covering these new $12 million of projects that you have listed downtown? I'm on slide 10 of 26 on our, of what you presented, or it's in our slides.
New projects in FY 2025.
Water capital budget summary. So those equate to about 12 million bucks, and so those are new capital projects. And in the slide before, it shows the operating new, you know, additional debt service. So I'm assuming that the debt service is because of these new projects?
Right, we take the list of projects, we have the cash flow, that goes into the debt service calculations, and John does, which goes in the operating budget. So is that simple?
Most of the new projects wouldn't start incurring a ton of debt service until future years.
Yeah.
So it's unlikely there is a nexus, a tight nexus between these projects and the debt service.
But just, I guess to point out, and I recognize that some of the oldest water lines are in the downtown area, but we're now looking at new capital projects, and enterprise fund are based on utilization, based on buying into the system and all that. But when you're looking at $12 million capital expenditure in just in the downtown area, but you're going to have a 12.2% increase in the citizens out at Richland Hills and Windsor Hills and Leedsville Road and their water rates, eventually you're kind of going, I don't know, you know, is that equitable when you're spending the bulk of the new capital, all these new capital projects, other than the generalized new pump and the cellular meter replacements, I think are new projects that are specifically in a downtown area, but yet you're going to put the big increase on people all across the city.
I think we'd have to look back at where the previous investment was, where the next scheduled investment is. It's hard to tell by, you know, a one-year snapshot, but...
It's on here, the slide that you gave, so...
Absolutely.
You know, with that, you know, it is, you know, some people are kind of, you know, getting tired of rate increases, and I don't, I know I don't want to vote for a 12.29% water increase, even though it's small dollars, as Sterling pointed out. Are these, you had mentioned that there's been a study coming on of which ones need to be going. Is this pre-study, or is this, these number, these projects, are they before the study was finalized, or are they?
The projects that were on the list here for capital year 25 were three of the projects that were in the first 49 on the WRA 2030 list. So those, those were indeed projects that were included in the master plan.
Like, like number one, two, and three, or like 47, 48, 49?
Two of them were very high. The Fillmore Street one was very high, and the Sixth and Madison Street one was very high. The other project was tied on to a CSO sewer replacement project, so we were tackling it while we were doing the sewer improvements in the area.
Fillmore's got four inch lines, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, Fillmore, Fillmore needs to be done.
Yeah, so where there's ones that are, absolutely.
Slide 15, there's a little, it's kind of hard to read, but it shows all the water projects in the master plan all over the city.
The first phase of the master, the 2030 master plan list, we had 49 different projects, and they were spread out through the entire city. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to hear from Councilman Taylor, and then we're going to go move on.
Well, one building question. How much would we save if we didn't stuff envelopes in every bill? I have six properties, I get six mail-in envelopes. Same address?
They all come to the same address?
How much, how much savings?
I don't know. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. I know we use, we contract out our mailing, and I know for real estate, they try to put same addresses together in one envelope. I'm surprised it's not happening with water, too, but I will look.
Okay.
So that's one, so that's 38 cents.
Yeah, well, thanks.
It's all that budget crisis.
Savings.
Postage is expensive.
Okay, we will move on to the fiscal year 2025 proposed budget reconciliation. Mr. Patrick?
Thank you. Move forward one slide, Mitch. Wanted to go over quickly, just some results on budget engagement we've done this year, and then... What's that? I don't know, we'll upload it later. I said we'll upload it after this. Again, real quick overview of some of the engagement events we've did, we've done. You can see that we went out and we spoke with Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance, Optus Club, both rotaries, who knew there would be two rotaries, Qantas Club, city employees, and you can see based on the budget bracket challenge what the top program for investment was there. And then across the city, you can see that out of 1,033 total plays, it was investment in schools, that was the top priority there. Next slide, Mitch. Budget engagement going forward, we have had two, three budget and brews events so far. Domino Baptist Church Golf Park Coffee, and then city employees last week, and then tomorrow, we will be at West Side Deli, and on Thursday, Mellow Mushrooms. We are adding all of the frequently asked questions to the city's website, so council and any other residents will have access to those questions and answers. Next slide. And then, of course, quickly, I know council has a joint work session with Lynchburg City Schools next week. Just wanted to provide a brief overview of the Lynchburg City Schools budget and where we are now, so to get, help council prepare for that work session, and also, to the extent that we can, answer any questions that council might have today. So what LCS is, in their proposed budget, they show 17.7 million dollar budget deficit with status quo expenditures. That means funding everything that they do currently, including everything that's paid for currently by CARES funding. You can see a breakdown there, and this came directly from their budget presentation, of some of those, those programs that they're listing in their, in their deficit. Next slide. When Lynchburg City Schools administration proposed their budget, to close that 17.7 million dollars, they proposed about nine and a half million dollars of division level reductions. This would be 50 to 100 positions, including division level positions. I think that they have settled closer to the mid-60s and have a little bit more specific information on which positions those would be. There's other, most of the CARES, the programs funded with CARES would also be discontinued. They have asked that, on the city's books, we hold about $2 million in reserve for Lynchburg City Schools healthcare. These are savings that they have had in prior years, with their healthcare. They're asking to use 1 million... They're asking to use $1 million of that $2 million in reserve in this budget. So, just wanted to be clear with council, what that would mean is if council authorized using that reserve, even if council authorized level funding, that $1 million would show as $1 million of additional city funding. It's not ongoing, they've asked to use that as essentially one-time, one-time funds. They're going to start billing their component units for health insurance and then increase their employee contributions for healthcare premiums. There are an additional $5.2 million of school-level reductions. This would be going to the individual schools and asking for the principals and other staff to identify reductions. We do not know yet what those reductions will entail. As best I understand it, there is no list of what those reductions would be, but at $5.2 million, it's going to go well beyond non-personnel operating expenses, I would presume. And then they have asked for a $3.1 million increase in local funding from 39.4 to 42.5, and that basically closes the deficit. Now, this is what the administration proposed. Next slide. When the board voted on a budget, they voted to add or retain additional positions and programs. So, they're actually, their request is $5 million more than the administration's proposed budget, and that request would retain about 25 positions, which are yet to be identified. It would continue the LCS Restore program, which is a best practice behavioral suspension program, and they would continue the Virtual Academy. So, that's $5 million of additional expenses. Next slide.
And that was, that was the one that was the vote kind of off, out of the blue?
Yes.
That happened very, a split vote, like a 5-4 or something kind of thing?
Those were the, that's the $5 million.
And that was kind of ad hoc, extra, without lots of thought?
Seemingly.
Okay. So, but the $5 million is on top of what the administration asked?
Yeah.
So, instead of 17, it would be 22 or whatever? Is that what you're...
It's actually the three that was proposed plus the five.
Okay, gotcha. Oh, there you go, there you go, right there, gotcha.
So, what does that mean for the local funding request? So, currently, 39.4. LCS is, the administration's budget would add 3.1 million, LCS board would add 5 million. Now, when I say add, it's really restoring reductions, right? It's not adding new programs, it's restoring reductions that were included in the administration's budget. So, LCS Restore exists, the positions that they would be retaining are positions that exist now. So, it's not new, but it is more than what's in the administration's budget. So, the board asked for an $8.1 million increase to 47.5 million. Next slide. There we are. So, additional considerations. The administration's budget and the board's budget is based on the governor's proposed budget. The crossover budget that the General Assembly has sent to the governor is different. It includes a 3% salary increase with, where the governor's budget, I think, included a one-time bonus. That 3% salary increase, the way SOQ funding works, pays about 65% of about, of the SOQ-funded positions, and 0% of the non-SOQ-funded positions. And what that means practically is a 3% salary increase is going to be roughly total cost 3 to 3.2 million. The state would fund about half of that. So, if the salary increase is ultimately approved by the, by the General Assembly and the governor, in order to make that happen, Lynchburg City Schools would need order of magnitude a million and a half dollars of local funding to cover that additional cost. That would either come from, you know, potentially new local funding, or they would have to use some of their existing local funding to cover that cost, and if they, if they did the salary increase, they would have to find reductions to pay for that. Next, categorical funding and contingency use. The request that they, that the board sent to council does not include a specific categorical breakdown, and it does assume a use of all of the contingency fund, right? They're not setting aside the contingency. We talked about it, but the proposed use of the healthcare reserve, again, I want to stress that this is funding that is held in reserve on the city's books, and if they, if they ask to use it, it is, in essence, additional local funding, and it is a one-time funding source. There is not sufficient funds in the reserve to year after year after year pull a million dollars out and use it to help offset healthcare costs.
In the budget?
In the budget, yes.
One time?
Yes. And then, the other item, and it was in their, I believe, their agenda today, they are looking at potentially accelerating school closings to this fall to help close the budget gap, and I think that would save in, somewhere north of $3 million there. So, happy to try to answer any questions, I'm not sure we're going to have answers, but I wanted to make sure council had some general review of schools' budget.
Vice Mayor Frawley?
Yes or no, did LCS ask for the improvements at BASS?
I believe they did in their CIP.
So, they did. Did LCS ask for the funds needed to meet this $17 million deficit?
The full 17? No.
So, all this media that we're seeing about $17 million shortfall deficit, and that very same division didn't even ask for the funds to meet it? Yes?
The administration asked for three of the 17 million, the board asked for eight, yes.
I'll stop there. Council missions?
I've got a couple of questions that would probably be best to get communicated over to them, that would be helpful to have before next Tuesday. One is, can we go back to the, I think there was a slide, keep going, back, right there? So, division level reductions. Positions are not people, correct? Like, like a position is a position, doesn't mean it's a person unless it's filled.
Correct.
Right? So, I know that there has been a lot of movement in the positions over there as far as positions being filled and so forth. So, what I would be interested to see is, what is the true vacancy of positions, right? That was a very difficult thing to try to determine last year with the information that was provided. I would like to see them actually provide some sort of position control that shows us, you know, what does the true number look like body to position, you know, actual human being to position? Because when you have one teacher filling, you know, an eighth of a position at eight different schools to earn a full salary, well, those are eight positions filled by one person, sort of, but it's only one salary, if that makes sense. And there was, I might not have the eighth exactly correct, but there was some weird stuff going on in that spreadsheet that made it look like it was hard to determine where all that money was going. So, that's what I would just like to see, is a true accounting of actual human being employees versus funded positions, because that's also going to go back to that SOQ thing, too, right? So, do we really need that amount to make sure that we're paying our teachers well, right? Or is part of that going towards funding empty positions? So, that's just something I think is a, is an ongoing question with, does that make sense, Donna, what I'm asking?
I think it's, and I don't, I don't even pretend to understand their positions, but I know it makes it a little difficult if you have a music teacher that's one positions, but she travels to all schools to teach music.
Exactly.
And how that's accounted for. I understand your question.
Yep, and that's, that's exactly, that's exactly the, you nailed it. That was actually one of the teachers specifically I was talking about, was somebody in a, in a position that teaches a specific thing between multiple schools, and it looks like it's accounted for, like there's a budgeted position for the school, but then there's an accounting for that person filling a partial position in each school. So, are we paying for three full positions but only getting one person and one salary for those positions? That's what I would like to know. And then, this last thing that I've got written down here is, going back to the very first slide with the budget bracket challenge? Are we, are we validating whether or not people are city residents or anything taking this? Are we validating, what are, is this just to open?
We're asking them to give us the zip code.
Okay.
So, we can pull this information by...
By zip code, if council was interested.
But there's, I mean, there's just no way to validate it?
And I think, no one's going to represent that this is any sort of scientific...
Okay.
Experiment. I mean, this is, this is very much an opportunity for folks to participate in the budget process, to give us some feedback. I think what we're seeing is there's some consistency between what we're hearing at some of the engagement events and the results here, but is it surprising schools, in any locality would be the top priority?
One thing that I'd be curious about to see if IT could do, is can we trace to see if we had the same IP address, take this multiple times?
Yes, we've actually kind of set that up to make sure that if we have any internet dominators out there, that we sort of take their results.
You mentioned that at the retreat, make sure that this...
Councilman Dolan?
Yeah, going back to my question... Councilor Misskins, is it also possible to, I know that they must know what field of teachers they're going to be getting rid of. I mean, is it a math teacher, English teacher, council, or is there any way we can determine that so we could see how deep those cuts are going? I'd be interested in seeing that along with the...
The positions that are listed as the 52100, those are not likely to be school-level teachers. Those are, those are probably district-level employees. Now, they might be specialists and things like that. It's the position, it's any impact from that $5 million, $5.2 million in school-level reductions that would potentially see impact to, to teachers, and I don't think we know yet, I don't know that they know yet, what that, where those reductions are coming from, but I do think that we can get a breakdown by position and, by position type, and whether or not they're filled of what's in that 52100 relatively quickly.
So, the other thing I'm interested in is if they're going to be closing these two schools, where are they moving these 600 kids to, or where are these children going to be going, and are they going to be buying trailers to, are we going to see trailers on-site where the kids are going to be caught, or are they going to have classrooms of 40 kids, or what's going to happen here? I would like that information on you.
You can certainly ask for their strategy around, around that, but I do think, or recall, if there is an intent to close a school, they have a deadline of June 15th? I'm not saying that out loud. June 15th, so...
Sorry, I don't have the answer to those questions.
Yeah, I think the rezoning plan they were working on assumed that there would be an expansion of BASS, and they may have to revisit that entire plan at this point.
Thank you. Councilman Holgson?
On, on this, you just, can you go back to the slide that you were just on? That was where it had the CARES money? You know, it showed this...
The one right before this.
Yep. Yeah, right there. And so with that, obviously, you know, when this happened, so just even a few years ago, they had all this CARES grant, and I think it was completely clear, or stated clearly, that you can't backfill, you can't use these grants for operating positions of things that you need. And I think maybe they used that, I mean, they were kind of supplemental as opposed to funding classrooms.
My understanding is the...
Now, once the grants are gone, they're saying, oh, this is a big loss. Well, the grants were specific for a specific timeframe.
Correct.
Yes.
But they, they had a broader use of their funds than what the city was allowing.
They could use it because of all the learning loss that we knew would happen, and they said, oh, it's not going to happen, and it happened, and they used it to try to, but these grants are not to be, you don't, you don't say, oh, now because we don't have the grants anymore, we need to supplement that with city revenue. I mean, that's just, you wouldn't have done that to begin with. Okay, go to the next slide. So, the 17 million is, you know, I agree with Chris that it's, it's a ruse, it's not a real thing, because you're looking at those CARES money. It's, okay, go to the, yeah, yeah, this one right here. This one, obviously, it just came in out of the blue. It came in as a, not a really definitive quantitative discussion, it was just, hey, how about this and how about that? So, go to the next slide. So, the next slide shows that 5 million, and they are requesting a 3.1 million increase. I think the General Assembly just passed an extra at-risk money to Lynchburg for 3 million bucks. You get rid of the 5 million of, that they were just asking for, for, you know, Christmas shopping, or whatever that list was that they put on there, with that 5 million that didn't come out of any quantitative metric that the administration even asked for, that was kind of ad hoc with the school board asking for that 5 million. The 3 million with that new at-risk money, which the state is pitching in the extra, I think that negates that difference.
I'm not going to pretend to be an expert in the state funding. I do think the at-risk money was in the...
Was that an additional three?
Yeah, but it was in the governor's proposed, and if I understand it, it offset...
Offset something.
Something else. The money, the additional money that's in the crossover budget is, most of that's for salary increases, and quite frankly, that costs us more money than it, than it does to help us.
And it costs us because I'm glad that somebody else asked that for those SOQ positions. I mean, those SOQ positions, you know, the standards of quality positions, I think were about 60%, somewhere around there, I think you said, about 65%. So, which means we not only have to, we have to give 100% of the increase for the non-required positions. I recognize all positions aren't, just because they're required, they're essential, but my goodness, 35%? That's a big difference. I look at these budgets over the last 25 years, and you just see what's happened. You know, you see the declining enrollment, you see the city population has increased 20-some percent in the last 25 years. You see the school population declined by 20-some percent over the last 25 years. And, you know, the old formulas that said, hey, do it based on the percentage of population doesn't work. When you have fewer and fewer, you have a bigger population of city residents, fewer and fewer percentage that are using the public school. This last year, or this next year coming up, I think the Department of Ed has listed another 202 less kids. Did you, were you able to ever clarify that? I know I got your emails back about enrollment as opposed to ADM. ADM is the membership, not just...
Not the versus 12, 12 less students.
Yeah, but the, I mean, that's, that's enrollment numbers as opposed to...
No, I think the ADM was actually 12 less.
I think the ADM had...
And the enrollment was 200 and some more.
So, the ADM, according to the Virginia Department of Ed, was like 200 and some less. Did you ever...
We got, we got an answer from Dr. Modica, and I sent it to both you and Mr. Wegland, and so...
But then we replied, or...
Right.
We replied back to that, looking at the difference between enrollment numbers I think they're giving versus ADM.
We'll have to follow up with Dr. Modica to see whether or not we can check ourselves.
Because I think they, so the enrollment, yeah, I mean, that's, but the enrollment normally is always a lot higher because that's just a point in time.
Right.
As opposed to saying, hey, you know, the beginning of the year enrollment numbers are a lot more. You know, typically, you have fall-off, and then the ADM is what we get funded for from the state, the average daily membership. So, I think, I think if we can look at that to see that according to the, what they reported to the... So I think, I think if we can look at that to see that according to the, what they reported to the Virginia Department of Education is about two hundred, I think, two hundred and two actually less students than the previous year on the ADM.
I'll, I'll follow up with that.
Okay. And so with that, again, that's even level funding, level local funding means that we're actually giving more per pupil because there's less students, so. And obviously, you, you guys recommended level funding, which is again, an increased per pupil funding with less kids. The, you know, with that, if there's an increase in funding from, to the schools, that means it's got to come from somewhere else on the other side. And so I think your recommendation is level funding. The, the staff's professional recommendation says, hey, level funding. And, you know, some of these other numbers, it is, it is kind of surprising. And I agree with Chris when every day on the news, crisis in the classroom. It's like some numbers of, where did that come from? I mean, let's look at facts at least, you know. I, I recognize, you know, anyway. That's it. So we're going to meet with the schools next week.
Correct.
We'll have, so I got a chart that I'm going to get to you that hopefully we, we can look at the decline in enrollment, the increase in city. You know, we talked about increase in city mileage in roads that we have to take care of. Increase in population that the police have to take care of. Increase in population that needs more fire and rescue. So, increase in population, but a decrease in actual utilization of the public schools. I think that needs to play in, and it needs, we need to be accurate with data.
Yeah, we need to decrease our investment in our kids.
I think we're up to about sixteen thousand per kid, which is more than we've done before.
Dr. Wim.
Yes, thank you for the information. Thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate it. Question, over the past five years, can you give me, that's the next medium, whatever it is, well, just send it to us. What has been the city investment in the, over the past five years of the city portion? How, what has there been over the past five years? As far as those non-SOQ positions, I think it was called, how the state only funds those SOQ positions? What, what is some, give me the summary of what those non-SOQ positions, what are they? Like counselors or special ed teachers or, or resource officers, whatever the case might be? Janitors, whatever, care workers, whatever the case might be, bus drivers? Just give us one of those non-SOQ positions, so we can have an idea of what we're talking about. I know with the school board, when, when I see they recommended was, I think they said fifteen million for improvements to BASS or whatever for, if they closed two schools. They, if they, they can't increase a school within a six months for the next school year. So again, I think what that plan is, if they're trying to, if they're planning to close a school, what is that plan with those students? Also, there are certain grants given by a reduction in class size. So what is this doing to the class size ratio? So what's the new ratio going to be from child, from teacher to student? I think it was like twenty-four, whatever the case is, what is that going to be? If they're closing two schools for elementary level, which is the most crucial time that parents, kids need to have more personal attention and speak, go span the classroom size, what is that going to look like? Now, so we're going from whatever to whatever if they're closing two schools, what's that going to look like? And also, let's see what else, if I can read my notes. I'm just really concerned about that. We always talk about making investments in education, investments to our children. You know, we are, again, like remind persons, we're at a urban school setting. So some of our challenges are not going to be the same as kids in, in, of some of our county schools. Sometimes I look like the city, we're trying to make a city be a county. And we have more urban issues or urban challenges in our school system. It's going to be so different in comparing that to other areas because we are more of an urban school setting. So I like to make sure we can continue to remember that, to keep that in mind, that we have urban challenges. We just had a six-year-old last year get shot in his house. You know, so we got to remember those things in an urban school setting. You have more urban challenges in educating our children, and you can't turn kids away regardless of what their disabilities are or their mental challenges are. We have to educate all of our children. And we as a community, which is a faith-based community, we should take care of our neighbors and support our neighbors. But sometimes it's like we just, anyway, we, we just need to be careful as a faith, if we, so-called, you know, anyway, we just need to be careful. And make sure you understand the challenges facing our school system and our teachers and our support staff that's needed to adequately run our school system. I think those are my main questions. Thank you.
I do have one, oh, oh, sorry, does someone else have a question? I feel like I heard someone talking about, it was a parent that asked me at one of the events about the increase of children with IEPs at the, at the schools, that we said a lot of kids with IEPs come to the LCS. And maybe a cost associated with that, maybe that might be in, I, I just would like to see if we can get some information on that. Because of the support positions for those students. Just like to know more about that, please. Anyone else have questions for next week? Uh, Dr. Wilder?
Apologize. When we look at some of our county schools, can we compare our suspension rates versus the suspension rate of some of our local surrounding county schools? This is what is kind of gives you an idea of some of the challenges we're facing with when it comes to suspensions or behavior challenges. So kind of comparing what some of our challenges are versus like county school. Like suspensions and suspension rate might be a thousand versus county might be two hundred. Just if we can get some information on that would be helpful. Just put it, it puts it in context to me, for me.
There is data available.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate that. Yes, thank you.
Counsel Missions?
So, just in the conversation that was just had, everything rises and falls on leadership, right? And, and I want to point something out, and something probably never really mentioned in here before, but my two older boys are stepchildren, and they go to Forest Middle School. My two younger boys go to Lynchburg City Schools. I was just talking to them the other day, specifically after that whole incident at Heritage. They had a lot of fights at Forest Middle School. And then they got a new principal. And they don't have fights anymore. Am I saying we need a new principal? Not saying we need a new principal. But what I am saying when we're talking about the behavior, that seems to be a problem throughout the entire division, that policy needs to be addressed. That violent behavior and threatening behavior in the classroom just absolutely can't be tolerated. That's all.
Anyone else? Counsel McHulston?
Can you just go back a piece, while we were talking about asking for the one-time positions, I mean, one-time money? I guess that would be slide number two. You going, you going?
So, beginning?
LCS.
Yep, there you have it, one more. There you go. The one million of the remaining two million in health insurance reserve, that, is that what you mean?
Yeah, you had mentioned that they wanted to use one-time money in the health insurance reserve for annual operating money in the operating budget. I think I've known a lot of the differences that have happened over the years with different CFOs that they've had at the school system. I don't know if you've worked with them much, but I, I know one that was exceptional, and I trusted what he said. I knew when he looked at the numbers, it was true. Because they understood that you don't ask for something as simple as one-time money to be used in an annual operating expense. What's happening with, I know the finance staff has changed a lot. There's been lots of turnover over there. You know, I brought this up years ago, and I think maybe now is even more an opportune time, especially if they're looking at challenges in, within their operating budget of operating schools and education is for the city to start doing some of the things that the city can probably do a whole lot better than they can, where we consolidate some of those items. Some of the school, the, the, the financial office, I don't think has been, with the exception of one person that I ran into the other day and talked to him about how fantastic he did and wondering what's happening over there now. Seeing something like this, where somebody is asking to use one-time money for their operating budget, somebody who's a paid professional for volunteers, we all know that, you don't do that. It, it's mind-boggling and really wondering if that's something that can help save the education where we take care more, the administration, where we're consolidating more. If now they're looking at needing extra funding, they could focus the funding in the schools and we'll consolidate and save the taxpayer resources. I think, seeing that, seeing the other things where we have problems getting SOQ funding, getting how many people are vacant positions versus unfilled versus, you know, a lot of that has been, been tough.
Seems like a service.
It, it seems like we could do a, I don't know, I know, Donna, you've got lots of things in your office, but obviously, we're, we're paying twice for somewhat the same service, even though I recognize it's different, but it would be nice to bring things home and have things accurate and consolidated, which would probably be a little better economies of scale.
One thing, the million dollars, my understanding in working with their new CFO, I believe, and I could be wrong, but I do believe that this million dollars they're requesting out of the health reserve is for claims, health claims. That is one thing that we do joint. We look at our insurance policies jointly, trying to save money on both sides. And they've had a terrible claims experience over the last couple of years.
Terrible claims experience, meaning they had more claims.
Yes, more claims.
Than they budgeted for, which means the reserve is more needed.
Well, so they would need, and, and we've had to do the same thing before, where we didn't budget enough and our claims experience was really high, and we had to dip into our health reserve before. So my understanding is that is to help them pay because their experience has gone up so much, they need to pay for those claims. But they are looking at increasing their health insurance premiums that the employees pay and some other things trying to mitigate that cost.
I think Greg kind of described it maybe vastly different than I heard, but not vastly different, but, you know, one-time money versus ongoing operations. I think that's somewhat similar because you have an ongoing increase in claims, so it just.
Question worth asking, worth asking the school.
Just a really quick question, but not a quick comment. You know, we talked about a circus, if you look at the card in the news, the council has been a circus. So we've been experts of a circus, talking about the school system, but I'll just mention that comment. Also, over the past years, we've always looked at, I know we have monthly meetings with the superintendent and the city manager staff, and our mayor and vice mayor. We continue to have monthly meetings, and over the past, in the time of my service, we've always looked at how we can combine services, how we can look, how we can reduce fees or do that nature. So we've always talked about what services are duplicated and what we can do to save funds. So unless they've changed that process, that's what we've done years ago when I was on the school board. Why we look to see what we can kind of utilize resource together. Thank you.
Talked about what we have done.
I think they've done some things.
Same nickel.
Over my time, they've done some things.
Doing it, does.
I think we've made the, the greatest strides that we can in the areas that are probably the most nimble. There are other big things like finance and fleet, some other ones that are taking more effort. But I, I know that in healthcare, we've made it. Donna, I appeal to you on those other areas that procurement, I think we helped with that with procurement, so.
We didn't have resource procurement. They had one person.
We didn't add any people, but we did take over schools' procurements. I think we purchase anything over twenty-five hundred dollars for schools.
Counsel Taylor?
I would like to know what's the cause of the increase in claims?
I think we actually have a meeting this week with our health insurance advisor that schools will be part of, so.
Okay, well, if there are no further questions, we'll have our meeting, obviously, next Tuesday. And then for our, our next budget reconciliation meeting, maybe, went through, or, Mr. Bendah, would you like it if maybe we, if we have questions ahead of time, would you like us to email them to you?
And I, and I, well, I'll send out an email after this, because we're in that mode now where it's every other week.
Right.
Harrison, you said there's not something in the Dropbox. We're moving as quickly as we can live because we're having a meeting each week. And so you've seen, we got you the questions about the CIP and a couple of the things that were from the last time. We do our level best, particularly to focus on in advance of this coming Tuesday, your questions about schools. So that's, that, that'll be in the Dropbox in any presentation. And then what I may do in that same email, mayor, to your suggestion, say if you have questions for the ninth, if you could have those to me, you know, by COB the twenty-sixth, which is next Tuesday, that'll help kind of queue us up for the ninth and have a reconciliation on that day.
Perfect.
Works for everybody.
Okay.
If you want one real quick, one thing, what can we do to lower the, some, some, the tax burdens on our citizens? What we could do, I know you have listed in there seven seventy-five is the real estate tax rate per penny, if you have something about the.
We have a little card, actually laminate. I can give you.
Good.
I can give you that at the next meeting, and it'll give you what a percentage of penny and all of it, all of it is on the rate.
Thank you.
Yep.
And this is what services would be reduced to, Ken?
If they were proposed, I would, because that's going to take a bit of effort. If we do want to move into an area where we are then reducing taxes, I want to understand what that is because then I'd have to come back with you. Because where we are, we're at, anything more that you request in this point is either you're generating more revenue or you're reducing services. That's kind of where we are.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, this meeting is adjourned. Our next scheduled meeting will be held with the school board on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four at four o'clock at the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance.